The eighteen winners, the twenty first candidates, and the president of the evening. At this time, we will have a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, which can be led by councilor.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Oker. We would like to welcome everyone back to the council meeting. We are back in October, three months off in July. And we will have a public parking pass provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take it and break this evening at approximately 7:00 PM. We want tonight's proceedings to be as simple and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please nor pause or utter outbursts during the meetings. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. But then, I want to make a few comments regarding the rules that are in place today. There will absolutely be no signs, props, posters, or banners allowed in the chambers, other than which can be displayed on the overhead during the presentation. No sheets larger than eight and a half by eleven. Such materials shall not be held or leave any manner that blocks any others or create disturbance from these speakers or other business at hand. Items displayed on the overhead projector must be removed from the projector at the end of that person's public comment. Only the individuals who the council president has called to provide public comment may stand at podium. Multiple persons will not be permitted to stand behind the presenter. The only exception will be for those who need a translator or reasonable accommodations provide public comment. The two-minute time limit for public comment will strictly be enforced. Public comment must be directed to the council through the council president, not the staff or members of the audience. There will be no tolerance for disruptive public outbursts. The handicap landing area to the right side of the dais must be kept clear at all times. Those desiring to record the meeting will be directed to the landing area on the left side of the dais. The fire marshal will strictly enforce ingress into U.S. schools so as to ensure public safety. I will provide a warning to anyone causing a disruption. Upon a second or continued disruption, that individual will be asked to leave the chambers, and a necessary security will escort that individual from the chambers. Such removal will be for the time of the meeting. Again, we would like to welcome each and every one of you back to the council chambers this evening. These are your chambers, and we would ask that you respect these chambers. We are now under proclamation and presentations, and to give the first up will be councilor David.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have truly the honor to acknowledge a gentleman here this evening who has given so much of himself towards betterment of his community and the city of Albuquerque. And I've had several conversations with some of his coworkers recently, and have come to know him as someone who, besides a very good and kind and effective leader, he has done an amazing job of building camaraderie with the people he works with on a day-to-day basis. And their love and devotion to him are just amazing. So, Mr. Camp, I'm sorry, Sam Trugil, are you here? I sure will. Would you like to come to the podium and like to read this proclamation? Your friends told me that their goal was to make you cry. So, please don't do that, because then I will have to cry myself. So, the proclamation by the council of the city of Albuquerque. Whereas Sam Trugil joined the Albuquerque Fire Department in 1968 and served under five chiefs until his retirement in 1985. And whereas Sam served in the ranks of firefighter, driver, lieutenant, captain, and assistant chief. And whereas Sam served as the Albuquerque Firefighters' Union Association, IAAF Local 1455, as their president from 1976 through 1980. And whereas a pioneer, Sam became one of the first Albuquerque firefighters to graduate from UNM's Regional Medical School with a certification of EMT paramedic. And whereas during his career, Sam served in the divisions of fire suppression, rescue, hazmat, administration, and on the mayor's emergency services board for six years. As an assistant chief, he was appointed as director of the Albuquerque Fire Department's EMT paramedic division. And whereas Sam is a graduate of the National Fire Academy in Evansburg, Maryland, as well as having two degrees from the University of New Mexico and an associate's degree from fire technology, in fire technology, and a bachelor's science degree in public administration. And whereas Sam served in the United States Navy, and after his retirement from AFD, he continued to use his skills as a medic-nursing assistant at the Albuquerque Veterans Hospital. And whereas in June of 2000, Sam was instrumental in organizing the Albuquerque Fire Department Retirees Association, where he is celebrating his sixteenth year as president. And whereas Sam Trugil has committed his life to serving his country, his community, the International Association of Firefighters, and the Albuquerque Fire Department, we proclaim that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes Sam Trugil for his dedication and service as an Albuquerque firefighter and as president of the Albuquerque Fire Department Retirees Association. Thank you. You've been a busy man.
Thank you.
Do you want to give a few words for us, Sam?
I just want to thank everybody, full of surprise. I was coming down to testify on behalf of the arson firefighters, the arson investigators, so it blew my mind. Thank you.
You're also a veteran, is that correct?
That is correct.
An naval officer?
Yes.
And you religiously attend and organize all funerals?
Yes, unfortunately, unfortunately, we just had our 104th retiree funeral in fourteen years. That's the hardest part of what I've had to do with. These guys that were buried today are, have been my mentors, my leaders, and my friends and brothers.
Well, thank you, sir, for all of your years of service, and I have this proclamation that I'd like to give you, sir.
Before he comes up, Councilor Gibson, I want to say a couple words about Sam, who has known him for many, many years. Thank you, Sam, for your public service, both as a military servant and serving this community, the fire department. I know you talk about yourself, firefighters, you know, bringing up this problem. You're one of the peoples that has served on the fire department for many years and laid the foundation for many other firefighters today. And I didn't think of finding this fire departments in the country, but it's because of your leadership years and years ago that made this fire department a service today and that's what I appreciate the service. And I was also awarded by Councilor Gibson, and this was supposed to be a surprise today, so I didn't want to state anything about it, but the proclamation, you came up to state it, and I took orders.
Again, thank you so much. It's appreciated, and I'm grateful that the councilors have so much respect and support the fire service. Thank you.
And fortunately, receiving the proclamation, thank you. The next proclamation will be read by councilors, and that is for Connie Chavis. I think that is no surprise that Connie Chavis is here.
Connie Chavis as well as Drew Bogman. I guess Drew Bogman wasn't going to make, but I guess he did. Drew, come on down. Connie Chavis with the Bear Foundation, Drew Bogman with Princess Jean. And this is the record, the sixtieth anniversary of Princess Jean, Neighborhood, and also Motherfucking. I'll just go ahead and read this, have you personally come down. Where sixty years ago in 1954, Dale Bell, Dale Bell's sixteen-hundred home, Princess Jean Park, named in honor of his wife Jean Bell, would build soon in Lomas and New York School from New Bank to Long Beach. And whereas the homes of Princess Jean Park were featured in exhibit at the Smithsonian being family-friendly, affordable, for touring troops, and offering the modern conveniences of the million floors in Mrs. Jean's home. And whereas in the past sixty years, the community of Princess Jean has been home to many growing families and businesses. And whereas in 2004, the Fairbanks Foundation joined the Princess Jean Neighborhood Association, providing shelter and supportive services to women and children experiencing homelessness. And whereas the community of Princess Jean is home to a neighborhood patrol led by Mr. Andrew Bogman and his team of dedicated long-term patrolmen, and that's to keep the community safe for generations to come. And whereas on February eighth, 2014, the Jean Bell community center reorganized, featuring a community, a communal activity, homework, health, and grants for students, new game room, activities for children, and a twelve-foot square foot gym that is open to the public. We proclaim that the city council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes and congratulates the community of Princess Jean and the active residents who serve and make the community a home.
Thanks so much for coming down, folks. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I just want to thank you, and thank you for our recognition for sixty years. We'll be celebrating our sixtieth anniversary tomorrow night for the National Night Out. We even have a song that we're going to be putting on for those attending. We're expecting about four hundred attendees, so you're welcome to attend.
I'll certainly be there outside the community center.
That'll be great. Community center and park.
We've really done a great job, one, thank you, the family and community services, the park and everything. Yeah, making that community center real, and it's just a great public investment.
Connie, anything you want to?
I just want to really thank the Princess Jean community for welcoming the Bear Foundation into their community and really with open arms and open hearts. So, thank you for honoring them tonight.
Thank you for all you do. You finally got me up here. Okay, want to plug you in the front? Yes, thank you.
Next on the agenda, I've got a presentation from David Padraal regarding People Helping People, and I had asked Mr. Padraal to give this presentation. If you were this Padraal, if you can keep this to private, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Evening, Mr. President, good evening, City Councilor. First of all, I would like to mention on some of the work that's being done on the police board by earnest changes in our community has been looked at. It's looking like we've put some other people together that you're looking at, really good school, and I hope we continue to be consistent with it. People Helping People is a program designed to make a deal to the grassroots level of our community by using the police department, by using our facilities and points of recognition, by being able to work with kids as a part of this, and we would like to take and put together a business association, where we'll be able to hook it up with grassroots-level people and getting, and writing business plans. So hopefully, we become self-sustaining. And now, I'm going to deal with Mr. Cameron Sopin, Young Democrat University of Mexico, come and give a presentation. I'll come back and reinforce if you find one.
Proceed, stay in for the record.
My name is Cameron Sopin. Thank you, Padraal. Thank you, City Council, for giving us an opportunity to present our findings and kind of look at the strategies that we're trying to present to get a comprehensive solution to what you guys are trying to solve right now. So, I am the acting director of operations at People Helping People, consultant for and provided as a brief overview of the management and values of the organization, which should be all passed out to you. It may just be the cover letter, but we can get that to you. What I wanted to represent was that there are major values, which I think are misrepresented, which is our commitment to community development and which needs to be committed in our findings through the DOJ to the city of Albuquerque and the community at large. We believe that this process will require unorthodox procedures, failure, and innovative breakthroughs. And what is most important to me, as I deliver this presentation, is to make clear that it's not going to be a cakewalk. I'm sure that, I'm sure that none of you are anticipating that either. But just to clarify the amount of complexity that this issue is going to take and the amount of steps. This being said, it also has a great deal of hope to offer to the community. It offers a chance for a new type of representation, representation for neighborhood associations, and an expansion of services to communities that may lack resources or the skills to facilitate a culture of community policing. The strategy of policing is written extensively about the DOJ and has the capability of producing policy that will ensure the safety of both officers and the population that they serve. It will also create a board that is responsible for ensuring compromise between local community leaders and public officials. The remedy to this situation may seem intimidating, but it may also be a triumph for public involvement in local government. Evaluating the model of the DOJ and other case studies in which this type of policing has been implemented, there's room for improvement. However, by improving discretionary funding for the organization, the city is looking towards growing investments that create active neighborhoods with a system of comprehensive and participatory management. The Albuquerque community as a whole has suffered damage to its relation to community values. With investments in the development of future industries, we may also have an opportunity to develop local strategies that will help to improve the industries. We may, and develop the network of security provided by both public officials and community residents. This may not only improve standards of workforce development, but can also result in other programs that support various infrastructural development. By outlining, evaluating, and reviewing the fundamentals of participation at the local level, People Helping People will demonstrate precise, effective, and comprehensive strategies that may be used as a model for urban areas experiencing similar turmoil. Thank you for your time. If there's any questions.
Are there any questions? Any questions for Mr. Padraal? Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, and I'll have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Next item on the agenda is economic development discussions. There is no economic development discussion this evening. Administration, questions and answers, councilors, are there any questions for the administration? Councilor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a question for Director Rearing, or in the flooding that we had this weekend. And I believe AMATCA Commissioner Hernandez is also here in the audience, so we might want to, he's right there nearby, and I believe so either, I mean, why don't we, why don't we hear from Director Rearing's report, and maybe let you guys up there together?
Mr. President, Councilor Benton, I was very proud of the efforts from DMD staff and the city on the response of the storm event that hit about one o'clock to about 12:30 to one o'clock on Friday, Saturday morning. The, when we got on site, the Broadway pump station was at full force, all five pumps were working. That's our, usually our first area where we go look there, and also the Burellis ponds is our two most sensitive areas in the town. The, the wet well was full, the basin, the new storm pond at Broadway Lomas was full, so we checked the pumps, they were working. We thought that water was not getting, since everything was so full, we went to the outfall into the North Versus channel, and it was pumping at full speed there. We do have some pictures of that, it's quite impressive from the amount of water that was getting forced out of there. So that pond and all the work that we've done over the last eight or nine years saved a little over five and a half million gallons of water from entering into Martinez Town and Burellis areas. We, I was down at the Burellis Neighborhood Association driving on Stover, where we've had some issues before, and the tingly pond is about half full. All pumps were working there, the intersection of Marquez and Amherst is clear for the first time since I remember a storm, based on our efforts last summer, or after, in the last summer. I know working with the Water Authority Authority, there was an issue with a pump at the Bell Commercial Pump Station, and I'm getting a degree from them on what the issue was and how it was relieved, and if there's anything we need to do to further improve that storm drainage area. But all in all, with two and a half inch of rain in less than an hour coming from the university area down into our system, I believe we did very well. The issue on the Broadway pump station was there was so much water in the pond and so much water in the pipe that the pressure actually built up inside the manholes. And it wasn't undermining the rope, but it actually pushed the manhole out of the ground and took asphalt with it. So that's the large pit that we see on Broadway right now. Crews worked, TLC, one of our, one of our best contractors, was out there at five o'clock in the morning on Saturday starting that work and was able to get one lane open in each direction. We had two construction projects downtown, the Third Street and the Fourth Street project that were both obviously in sensitive portions of their construction without asphalt on there, without the storm drain systems in them, and it did cause some undermining into our parking structures. Again, our, our city crews were here through the weekend cleaning up both the floors of that structure and had them open by seven o'clock this morning. So, very proud of the efforts, significant storm once again, but it shows that every, every bond cycle, the geo money that we're using, we're making these incremental improvements to our storm drain system. And in this year's geo bond budget, we have more money to continue that effort. We've done a mid-valley drainage plan in cooperation with AMATCA that identifies about forty million dollars for the projects that are still left to go to solidify our, our mid-valley, and we continue to keep chasing them as we as funding is available.
Well, I want to thank you and also please thank the members of your department that were just fine this weekend. The big dramatic situation is always there at the underpass in Central. And I guess in this kind of bad, it's a, we don't expect that to, to continue to occur out in the United States. It's probably a major infrastructure to correct that.
Mr. President, Councilor Benton, it is. It's a, it's a very sensitive area of our, of our drainage area. It's the lowest point we have. And because the water is maintained within the right-of-way, we've addressed the other concerns first. We've, we've ensured that we protect private property first with taxpayer dollars. Now, that water stays in the right-of-way, but obviously, it, it should not be driven through. And we've tried to remind people that if you see any amount of water in an intersection, if you cannot see the asphalt, don't drive through it, because you just don't know how deep it is. So what we're going to attempt to do on that, because the value of any improvements in there is so significant, is we're going to look at some advanced warning systems that maybe if we can sense that there's water in there, we can turn on some flashing lights in that area, perhaps just have some signage that says, be careful of water. We have some of that in our dip crossings around town. But we are going to be more sensitive to that area when, when storms do hit. Contact the DMD earlier, our barricading company earlier, and just simply shut those areas off, because we have storm drains down there, but it's the bottom part of our system. We actually have to pump that to the pump station in order for it to get the North Versus channel, so it's the last place that clears. And, and the cost of replacing that would be significant. So, we, we're just looking for ways to get people out of downtown other ways besides those two routes.
Okay, great. And that's exactly what Director Hernandez and I talked about, that we kind of know, we know where, where some of the areas are, and we're not going to be able to protect every single one, but that maybe we could work out some more elaborate, more specific plans for closing streets in these kinds of situations. There's also the support, you know, support driving crowd, there's not that many of them, but that you like to go out in these events, and maybe kind of keep that out of the period. Director Hernandez, would you like to add anything?
I sure would. Just for the record, AMATCA is not an agency of the city of Albuquerque. We're a standalone agency, I'm an elected official. I do represent Burellis, I represent Martinez Town, and I represent Sycamore, which I believe is where the storm was centered. We think it's about a 2.6 inch, well, it was 2.76 inches at, at the intersection of University and Martin Luther King. We believe that's a 500-year storm, so no matter what we did, our system set up to hold an under-year storm. I'd like to discuss a few things. One of them is, you and I last year discussed that at eight and in Stover, that if at all possible, when there's a rainstorm downtown that we shut traffic off, because last year, the people living at Stover got flooded not because the water was too high, but because the cars were making waves and were splashing the water into their homes. The same thing happened on Friday at the intersection of Granite and Broadway. The, the system was overwhelmed at that, in that area, the lowest spot is the corner of Lomas and Broadway, which is why we put the interim post office pond in that location. It's a logical place. But after the 2009 to 2011 mid-valley drainage management plan, which was paid for by the city of Albuquerque, we, we realized that the best way to fix that problem is, or to alleviate the problem, because I don't think there's an, an ultimate fix for it, is to intercept the water on Lomas before it gets to Broadway. And identified was the vacant lot at Arnold, Arnold and Marble. And if we were to build a 38-foot pond in there and put a pump station in there, we would alleviate some of the pressures that blew out manhole covers on Broadway and et cetera. AMATCA has had five million dollars set aside since 2009 to build that, and I would urge the city to go ahead and buy the property ASAP so we can start designing and building that.
And, and we've had these discussions with Director Rearing. I do think we need to move forward on that. Also, we need to recognize that that property has a much higher, better use than a temporary pond, just what we have now. Obviously, it worked great, and hallelujah that it did, but it would be terrific to come, you know, complete a long-term solution.
AMATCA went and habzed on that property that was spot on the post office, because we didn't, we didn't know who the next mayor was going to be, and we knew that we would mostly still be, and we still are, the same five-member board is still there, no, four of the five-member board is still there. And we want to push to get rid of that property, because there is a much higher and better use, especially with the, the new plans for Broadway, which calls for much better use all along. I should also mention that right now, the mid-valley DMP calls for a pond at the intersection of Martin Luther King and Broadway, the old YMCA, and that's certainly not the highest use for that either. So if we were to build this very deep and steep, it would be 30 feet deep, concrete walls, concrete bottom, with a facade around it to make it look like the surrounding neighborhood. Who would to build that, then we wouldn't have to build a pond over at Lomas and Martin Luther King.
All right, President, Councilor Benton, I could just add one thing I was talking about is, the, the city also has five million dollars set aside for mid-valley drainage improvements, and we've been actively working on purchasing that site. It does have some environmental issues, but we believe that other sites, because it's off, the intersection is the highest investment. And Lomas and Broadway has always been the, it was the interim pond, we know that, and we've been working with AMATCA, and whatever, if we sell it or if we redevelop it, it's happening after them, or we'll be with it. happening after them, or we'll be with it. We agree that the number one priority for the mid-valley, the next priority of that $4 million is, phase one of that pump station would be $12 million, that would primarily be the holding area, but we need to work with $22 million to relocate all the pumps, the new pumps, and the pumps are reliable right now, but then one of those storms, our old years old, they're well past their useful life, and definitely will sensibly in our system, and one that we check every time we get a drizzle. Thanks very much, you both.
Thank you, Councilor Benton. Councilor Witty?
Thank you. That, you know, issue, unions, and all of us, my same union, and I will join Councilor Mayak in resisting that attitude. Thank you for defending the two things correctly, and back to what I said already, I think we should be involved in the certification of any of these things, whether it's some people consider their inside baseball, or whatever it is, the reason folks are going to pay that money out for it, so we'd like to be part of that process, for sure. Thank you.
Councilor Gargenio, I've been a labor lawyer for 20 years, and I don't know that I've seen a labor relations situation that is more abysmal than the situation that the unions have with the City of Albuquerque right now, it's bad.
Mr. President, I may ask, how many years are we going on without a contract for some of the unions?
Four years for some of the unions, which is, in my experience, unprecedented.
And is it because the unions are so unreasonable?
I guess that's also a matter of opinion. The unions are asking for contractual provisions, which they've had for 20 or 30 years, which they've enjoyed with the City of Albuquerque, regardless of the mayor, and we are seeing, in terms of a position by the city, a position with regard to specific employment issues that are unprecedented.
So you don't think it's unreasonable?
I don't think the union's position is unreasonable. Certainly, I have a dog in the fight, but I also represent coal miners, and grocery store workers, and nurses, and relative to what others are asking for, unions aren't asking for anything remarkable in these negotiations.
Thank you.
Councilor Gibson?
Mr. Chairman, Vice President, I think continuing on is maybe something we want to take up at Godlines Meeting, kind of going into the area where the debate we were at contract itself, and Mr. Thorpe will probably address that, but if it continues, I'll probably have to basically state the city's opinion as well.
Okay, we'll let Councilor Gibson ask the one question, the other guys go on to the next slide.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I'm not a lawyer, far from it, but in my plain lay language, let me know whether I've got this right.
All right.
The original court act, the original injunction filed by the union, the intent was to be able to work within the parameters of the agreement, the existing contract. That was the original lawsuit.
You've got that absolutely right, Councilor Gibson, we had a contract that the City of Albuquerque attempted to unilaterally change.
Right.
And we filed a lawsuit to enforce that agreement.
So, the unions were not suing for money, there was not an exchange happening within this lawsuit. Where there is, that is the intention of the lawsuit that was made public on Friday, that the City of Albuquerque was seeking restitution, and a dollar a month, around almost a million dollars, over $900,000.
That's correct.
Is being sought. So I think there are big differences when we... You don't want to say, "Well, you know, we had to sue because they sued us first," but anyway, I don't get into lawyer, lawyer talk with that, because I get lost very quickly. But I'm glad, thank you for confirming that, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Gargenio, Mr. Van Gogh, something else?
It is.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I did want to ask the legal department about where we are on the latest public petition, and also I heard about the paper, where the numbers were changed, and the petition were, if not disqualified, certainly not honored. Have we communicated with the folks who started the petition?
Mr. President, Councilor Gargenio, I was notified of this issue, I want to say Thursday, by council staff, and then I acted on it, at least Thursday or Wednesday, and then about the numbers issue, and then I added on it, and I went and looked to see if that, you know, was actually the issue, was whether the wrong numbers were being used. When I learned about it, I notified the clerk, the clerk notifies the appropriate people, and I notify the media to make sure that it was out there, so that people understood that there was an issue, that the number was wrong.
And the timeline of any of this?
I want to say Thursday afternoon, late Thursday afternoon, we immediately had people contact all the appropriate people.
Because publicly, I don't think it was known until Monday afterward.
I'm only telling you what I, when I learned of it, I think honestly it was Thursday around 4:00, and that's when I was contacted by council staff.
The difference was quite a bit, it went from 11,200 or something like that, to 14,500, which is a great percentage, number-wise, to expect somebody to gather in moments, really. The deadline was Monday at 5:00, was that correct?
Mr. President, Councilor Gargenio, I believe the date was July 27, but that was Monday, and that was the appropriate date. That signatures have to be turned in for the petition to be...
The deadline to turn in the...
I believe so, I'd have to go and check, I think that was the date.
And some of the folks that were involved in this didn't hear about it until that very day, the deadline day, that they needed to gather another 2,000?
Mr. President, Councilor Gargenio, no, I don't think that's correct. At least from, I don't know who they ought to learn it from, I learned it, like I said, I knew there was an issue, I want to say Thursday of last week, it was either Thursday or Wednesday at 4:00, because I went and looked at the numbers right away, and it was 71,000 should have been used as, from the last regular election, from the previous election, instead of the last four averaged in, whichever was supposed to be greater, and the 71,000 should have been divided by five, which came up with 14,214, I want to say 218.
So who's in charge of then letting the proponents of the petition know this new revelation?
I believe, how they learned of it was five minutes after I learned of it, the clerk notified and called.
And who discovered the mistake?
The, I learned of it, I discovered there was a mistake on Thursday, like I said, at 12:00, Mr. President, Councilor.
City Council rules of procedures regarding public comment, do we have anyone sent up to speak? And basically, what this rule does, there was amendment made, we made rule changes, and the council meeting, we adopted the rules, and basically, with the new rule, what that does, is that limits the number of people that can speak under general public comments, to 30 individuals. At that time, after 30 people have decided to speak, they will either be heard later that evening, or basically, they can sign up for a general public comment at the next meeting. I particularly don't support that, you know, I think that general public comment is equally important to all the legislation that we're here with, and this is one of the only venues that the public has an opportunity to cut up and speak regarding issues. So I basically feel that people that signed up to speak should have every opportunity to speak before 10:30, or 11:00 at night, if it's early, or at the following meeting. I'd like to see that rule change to go back to the old rule, that would allow for general public comment, as we've done before in the past, for several, several years. And I think we do have a couple of people signed up to speak on that issue. I'd like to move our attention before we go to the statements. We have the motion of the second. We have Diana Morgan, who signed up for that agenda, we're going to go with her.
She left.
Diana's left the building, and there was no other individual signed up. Okay, let's go and open this to the council, any questions? Councilor Witty?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, first of all, we've given it a chance, and in fact, it hasn't affected anybody that's been down here speaking for the council. We're talking about 30 people, and we say about, if it ever happens that we go through 30 folks, and then we have to wait until the end of the street, what I'm concerned about it for the folks that are at the end of the agenda also, that have to wait when they have a specific item that the city council's doing business on, when they have to sit here and wait till 10:30 also. So at this point, I don't think that we've had enough time to see if it works or it doesn't work, because at this point, after two meetings that we have, it has not affected anybody. Everybody that has signed up has had the opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting. I think that, you know, one of our priorities is to have public comment, but another part is to make sure we do the business of the city when it comes to be at 12:00 at night, and we're trying to hear some of these bills, and we're all getting tired, I don't think it makes good government. So we're not limiting anybody to do public comment, in fact, I think 30 folks, on the most part, takes care of everybody that's going to have public comment, but it also that we do know that we're going to be able to get the business of the city done. So I think that at least at this point, we need to give it a little more chance to see if it does affect those folks that come down or not. Thanks.
Councilor Harris?
Thanks, and I think that the Councilwoman said it as well as I could have said it, except I just wanted to, I guess, admit that or chum that just a little bit, and the Councilwoman said that public comment is one of the priorities. Why shouldn't the charter of time? That's just something that is nowhere listed as something that we are supposed to do, is to hear public comment about stuff that we're not even going to vote on that night, we might not ever vote on, and it is disappointing that there are a lot of times, and I hate that they kind of talk about this in public right now, but there are times when all of us, because we work all day, it's a part-time city council, we get to some very important bills, very important funding resolutions, very important ordinances, very important other issues of the city, sometimes charter changes that are very fundamental, and they involve millions of dollars, they involve rule changes, law changes, and they affect people's lives, and we are spending not enough time on those issues when we're not, you know, focused as we should be, because we're humans and we're tired, because we spend sometimes two hours, we spend over two hours several times on public comment, and we had to squeeze the other business of the city, which we are obligated to do. The City of Albuquerque is great, and this is what governments around the country do this, where they allow public comment, allow people to come down and be on TV, and talk about essentially anything they want to do, and anything that's on their mind. And I think that's just one of the things that has a manner of policy kind of evolved into, although the government charter requires us to do that, and I think this rule really has a good balance, where it's a balance where you allow those people, and now, we announce it in advance, the actual member that likely will be able to talk, will be able to make a decision at that point, they're going to stick around. But more importantly, what I find is that when we have other business of the city, when you have other law change that we are considering, the people who come down and speak on those issues are often people who have never, ever been to the city council, and they're coming down to talk about substantive business that the city is actually doing. And what we are doing is we're choosing one group of speakers over and over, and frankly, the group of speakers who are coming down often are folks who are kind of involved in a lot of things, that are talking about, or, and the folks who haven't come down, are talking about things that are much more relevant in a way, we're doing charter, we're fully doing the charter, and I think that we kind of need to respect those people more, respecting their right, just pick the process more, and I think the rule is really, does deserve to the city council, and I think it was an effort to rein in the process a little bit, and as the Councilwoman said, we should give it a chance to work, and we can't actually see, and just to show how muted or how unimportant this has been, we don't even have people who are concerned about this, that even if they're running, talk about it. It's not a problem that there are no solutions, I think, in this, I think we should give it a chance.
Councilor Witty?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I did agree with every, I was in favor of every change that we made, except for this one, and because of the fact that I do believe that, first and foremost, the business of the city and the business of this council to listen, and one thing I'm concerned about this is, I think that the danger here is we might be penalizing somebody from, somebody that comes down, maybe doesn't sign up on time, or a bunch of people signs up to speak before them, and they get put off till 11 or 12:00 at night, and I think because of that reason, someone who really wants to come down and speak, you know, public comment, that, you know, some people that are well-meaning, that really, we need to hear from, you know, could be penalized there, and I think it's a small price to pay, for those of us that are here, and really, first and foremost, that's our job, to listen to people's insights and thoughts on the important legislation that we're dealing with, and we need to get to that, and like I said, I agree with every other favor of every other change, I think we made some significant changes that I think really helped, really helped with, not like the main order, but I think even more conductive, really being able to hear from everybody, but this one, I think, is something to change back.
Councilor Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I absolutely disagree. Mr. or Councilor Harris opined about how important it is that we do the business at hand, but not listen to the public. What other business do we have than to listen to the public? This is why we were elected. This is why I care. Now, other folks may not want to hear from the public, but I do. I don't think it's informative, but it's instructive, for us to think that when you make these decisions in some kind of vacuum, and we know best, and therefore, we don't want to listen to the public, is really egregious, and it's the kind of thing that leads people to think, not only are you not being truthful to me, but you're trying to tell me that what I have to say is not important, you're going to limit me to two minutes, you're going to limit me now to 30 people, and heaven knows what else is in the future. So, I caution this, that, you know, we complain about the day has been taken over, well, you can see why. When folks are not allowed to say what they need to say to us, then what else is left? So be careful with these one-sided arguments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Bennett?
There's no limit of any kind on public comment on any agenda that we have legislation as far as, nobody's not wanting to public comment, and in fact, 30 minutes of public comment is probably going to, between people getting up and sitting down and so forth, is probably, and we're going to continue to allow applause, which I don't really agree with, Mr. President, if we're going to continue to do that, we're talking about an hour and a half here, under 30 minutes, under the 30-person rule that's in place presently, and I do think it ought to be tried, I don't think it's been a problem yet, and when it appears to be a problem, I'll be the first to be willing to talk about changing, but it's very odd to me, if I'm sure that it's in place for some total of one meeting, and we're going to say it's a bad idea, it's just not the way I operate, but, you know, we have to do the business at hand, I have to say frankly, and I don't want to cast a wide net or anything, but a lot of people come down repeatedly and speak on their general public comment, as soon as they're finished with their public comment, they don't stick around, even when sometimes we have an agenda that has to do with their public comment, they don't stick around to listen to the debate. So how low in form are they, how low in form are we, if we can't even have the steam late at night to debate with one another? I think this should be given a chance to, a chance to work, and as I say, I'll be the first one, somebody can call me on it, if it's not working, but as to the people who have to come late, they can still sign up, they can still speak, or they will be put first on the list for the subsequent meeting, and then they'll be able to know exactly when you're going to be there. I mean, I do not think this is unreasonable, certainly was not intended to limit general public comment, yes, we do want to hear public comment. I'd be interested in maybe an amendment to this that we could consider later on, that say on a night that the mayor might come down and join us, so that there will be unlimited public comment back on that, or in special occasion of that sort, but we've got to give this a chance, and certainly was not ill-intended, and I certainly do not think it is a def...
And certainly was not ill-intended, and I certainly do not think it is a reflection of, in fact, I take offense if anyone would suggest that, that my motivation in supporting this was to, is I want to hear from.
Counselor Warner, then Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And always, if there, if there's something special, that special activity or something, we have a lot more folks that are coming down, we can always suspend the rules to listen if there's something special that's happening. Um, if there's something that happens and we want lots of people to speak, we can always suspend the rules.
Counselor Gibson.
I think it's apparent, thank you, Mr. President, but I think it's apparent that nobody up here really wants to diminish, um, uh, feedback, public feedback. We all get substantial amount of emails and telephone calls, and, um, I get some, have had some very, um, very productive conversations with constituents that way, but I think, you know, we are here first and foremost to do the business of the city of Albuquerque. And, uh, for a while there, that was being done on the back burner, I believe. I would like to keep the rules as they are until such time when we need to do something else. Actually, what I really would like to do is look for other venues, meaningful venues, for people to express themselves, um, you know, in a public sound, perhaps televised form. So, thank you.
Counselors.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, certainly, no doubt, no doubt, the counsel president and others that presented this, in our, in favor, there's no doubt that, that I think intentions are absolutely right on, spot on. I don't think there's less in question whatsoever. I guess, in my mind, I was thinking of a scenario where maybe somebody might come down and, and again, just not maybe be on the front of the list and somehow get pushed off to the next, to the next week. That was my only concern, um, that, that we might, somebody might really have something that they need to say, that they need to hear, and might get pushed off to another meeting. And so that's, is there a scenario? I guess if there was, uh, if, if that scenario was unfounded, and maybe that is impossible to happen in this, within this rule, then I think maybe I'd be open to, to keep it like it is.
Counselor Warner, and then Counselor Harris.
Thanks, President. And I still hold that, um, I don't know about thirty, why that's magic? Why not twenty-seven, thirty-two? Uh, so, you know, I wonder what we're thinking? Is it to save our own energy, so that we are spy and alert? That's when we should be the most likely, where we're listening to the public. And we ought to listen to anyone that can say something to us, rather than say, well, you know, I'm tired of you, uh, the rest of you sit down, now we ought to go to the business of, um, the city. I think that's what's really been, hello. Uh, and I only have energy for seven to two more minutes, and if you don't have that, I'm going to go to sleep. Uh, we're here to do the work, and if you didn't like this kind of work, you shouldn't run through office.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I wanted to respond first to Counselor Lewis's, um, hypothetical, and I think that there is a possibility, no doubt, that people come here and they, they can sign up to speak, they've talked to Crystal, and they'd be number thirty-one on the list, and they may inform her, by the way, um, oftentimes, all the comments stop at thirty, you might have to speak tonight. And at that point in time, they'd have to make some arrangements, come back and agree with her, and ask. I think we don't know what's technically going to happen, so we'll just out, um, there's like a phone call between Crystal and the person, we make sure that, a list first, and we don't really know what's going to happen. But what we do know, Counselor Lewis, because I've seen it happen, and you've seen it happen over and over and over again, is we get to ten thirty and we have to defer things, and there have been people that have been sitting there all night on something that's very important to them, and we tell them at ten thirty, come back. And this doesn't happen, occasionally this happens a lot. And so we aren't necessarily choosing our priorities. And are we going to prioritize, and how much are we going to prioritize public comment? I think it is important, and we are not saying that we don't want to hear from certain people, or not saying we don't want to hear certain things. We're just saying that we have limited time because we have till ten thirty every night to get certain things accomplished, and we have to prioritize the time to get this accomplished, is all we're saying. And the thing, the fact is that we are sending a lot of people home without giving them an opportunity to speak, often because we can't get to their agenda items that they waited all night for because it's been an hour to do a public comment. Um, that is our one.
Counselor Harris.
Well, I just, just to point out that, that as, as was said, we're, we're human beings. Most people have a tough time getting through a six or seven-hour meeting. And when, you know, in, in my case, I mean, the, the thing that used coming back to me are, are nights when we had, again, an agenda item on that night that had to do with what some of the folks were reiterating. Because I say, many people come and reiterate the same point. It's fine, public, free speech. But because of, because of the amount of time of us hearing the same, some of the same people repeating the same thing for, you know, hours on end, and we get to the agenda, I, you know, I'm going to, I'll, I'll cop to it, maybe I'm, I'm not cut out to be a, a, a public servant, Counselor Harris, but, but I'm a human being, and late at night, I see amongst many of my colleagues, maybe not you, sir, but amongst many of my colleagues, a, a, a serious loss of energy to the point where we're not debating, we're not debating the bills, very perfunctory, short, uh, amount of debate and introduction by the sponsor and vote on it, and let, you know, we're running out of steam. And that's a fact, I get, that is a fact that I've seen. Uh, that's all I want to say about it, but some of the same people who are repeating items, then are not there to hear a debate that should really be relevant to them. Or, you know, as described by Counselor Harris, other people have waited past the dinner break late in the night, and they finally get there to over late at night, so.
Counselor Harris.
Well, I'm going to be brief. I support what Counselor Barrett was saying, and what Counselor Lewis was saying, is that I think that, you know, um, coming from the community, doing a lot of community work over the years, um, really, we talk about people not being engaged in the political process, and, and boy, this is an opportunity for them to come and have their voices heard. Um, I am a young mother with five children, and I would come to testify here at city council. That was my opportunity to have my voice heard. For me to have to be here the whole time until eight, ten thirty, to have my voice heard, I mean, I would, I would get counsel as these are the people who are making these decisions, and they need to hear from us as constituents to really, um, have their, um, concerns voiced and, and heard by council. So I support this. I just think this is a standpoint, um, I agree, I don't think that it's been a, an issue lately, but when it does become an issue like it was when we had all those people here testifying, they were wanting to be heard and hadn't been heard for a long time, so, thank you.
And I'm going to go in with those, uh, by saying that, uh, I understand, Counselor Harris, that where you were coming from regarding the issue of the time that it's taken. At the same time, I have the greatest respect, those people that take their time, they come down and want to be heard by the city council and have their views expressed, we've only given them two minutes of time. And we've had a lot of contentious issues over the past six months. We can have this problem in the past, and I can see where you brought the legislation forward. But that's what's so great about the democracy here in Albuquerque, is if people have an opportunity to voice certain concerns to this council and to the public, this right now is the only venue they have. Like you stated, the mayor would come down and listen to their views, and I think we get all the people here. We've not had the mayor come down, and I've asked him to come down for some of our meetings. But I think it's important that we listen, and, you know, they repeated some of the same things over and over again, I think they've had the right to, because they just, they probably believe their voices are not being heard, and that's why they repeated some of the things that they needed. I mean, they've been upset, they've been here for months, for years, saying some of the same things, but it's up to us to listen to their voices. Again, we've only given them two minutes, and I would like to see that we, uh, support this amendment and going back to the original plans that we hit, we implemented forward. They worked for years and years, and we've made the change because of the number of people that were coming down to the meetings. But I just feel these are the people's chambers, they have the right to voice their opinion, and we are here to listen. We have a motion and a second on the floor for R A two. All those in favor, sympathize by saying yes, original and? Yes, those opposed? That fails, I six to three vote, and tonight, this will not be a problem because of our floor, because we have less than thirty people that are signed up to speak. Okay, let's go and move on to general public comment. Uh, there will.
Welcome back, Art.
Thank you, Council President Sanchez. I did not come down here to be on TV. TV has been mentioned a couple of times. I find the notion in our wireless society, that people come down here and make public comments and don't pay attention to the rest of the meeting, absolutely absurd. I also found it quite interesting that one or two counselors couldn't sum up each of their statements within two minutes' time. Oh, and I'm trying to be respectful of counselors, saying that you work all day as if this is something noble, but you get compensated for being the city council in a variety of ways, just like I am compensated for participating in the political process with nothing, if no other way, with gratification. One thing that was overlooked was redress of grievances. Some of the longtime counselors know that I worked on an issue with the transit department for years and years and years, that's why I repeated myself. Anyhow, I came down here, I wanted to encourage people to be respectful, respectable, and I acknowledge that processes of democracy can be less viewed. The United States Department of Justice findings, uh, one of them was a deficiency in leadership, not just in the police department, a deficiency of leadership in the administration and with the city council. So I'm tired of A P D getting beat up on. There's some things that need to be corrected in the Albuquerque Police Department, but the leadership deficiencies certainly are not exclusively in our police department.
Thank you, Art, your time is expired.
Thank you for your public service, and good night.
Counselor Warner.
Mr. President, I am very curious to hear the last of your statement.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Barrett. Anything that pertains to a particular agenda item is ten fourteen fifteen, suspending the, uh, current or partial police oversight commission pending establishment of another oversight system. That's the main reason I came down here.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Warner. Chris Sadio, followed by Kat Davinsky. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Sadio, I'm retired Navy, served twenty-six years. I'd like to start off first by saying thank you to Mr. Ray Gardner, bystander, first by saying thank you for attending the June twenty-first protest in police brutality. Thank you. Your presence was neat, was noted and appreciated. If you decide to run for mayor after R J Barrett's term is up, you would definitely have my support, and I believe many in this community. I am a pal after the James Boyd murder, and the Department of Justice scabbing the report on A P D on April tenth, two thousand and fourteen, to have five more A P D fatal shootings in five months from March to July, to July of this year. And there is not one of the pal video of any of the actual shooting. The credibility is just astounding to me. There is absolutely no transparency. If it is a justified shooting, there should be no reason to hide the video. Until that time, there will always be a credibility issue. I am still confused as to who is the chief of police at A P D. Anytime there is a fatal shooting, it is always the deputy chief speaking to the reporters. I know when the state police have a officer involved shooting, that Chief Pete Casillas talks to the media or the reporter, not his deputy chief. I have to say congratulations to Eden Gordon, when he was on TV, for, they make you wish for eternal child. And I will, I will take, I, I take my time to be here. I have been here since four thirty, so I can speak. If we respect someone, thank you.
Kat Davinsky.
Thank you.
Go proceed.
Okay, let me start from the top. Well, freedom of speech, freedom, excuse me. This is freedom of expression. Yes, freedom of speech, where is it? I came here forty-seven years ago. It is America what I wanted, why say that? It's not now. They come government, they come bigger and bigger. We need a smaller government. All this rules, regulation, restriction, uh, noise, you name it, you name it. This is our freedom, getting tougher and tougher, to do anything is tougher to live. Even pigeon regulation, that's important. Chimes, chasing chimes, that's important. Well, I'm sorry, that is important, more important than pigeon ordinance and order. That's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Silvio Del Angelo, followed by Arista Lewis, followed by Dr. Bill Cass, followed by Don Strider.
Tell me, who's here?
It's right, Silvio.
On the right?
Yeah.
Don, proceed.
Mr. President, Counselor, this stands, you know, this flag stands for, it means that citizens imperiled, and, and in, in the city, we are imperiled. You know, I guess before I get into my talk, you know, Counselor Harris, I, you just maybe abolished all public speaking, and that might make you happy, uh, Counselor Barrett, you know, to a certain point. You know, I think, I, I see the wall here, which is interesting. I guess the next modernization is going to be work through class that'll run up, right up here, so you, we won't be able to get to you. Uh, you know, uh, ten thousand dollars wasted on the mayor's office to, to make that a fortress, you know? A P D buys two-ruhr vehicles, three hundred and fifty AR fifteens, you know? I mean, we're becoming militarized. You know, this is just like Syria, this is like North Korea, it's no different. I understand now that the I R O hammer was sold by Chief Eden, that he won't even punish the people that don't record. Is that true or not? You know, uh, we had confidence in the D O J. You know, what's amazing to me is you don't want to know what demands are being made by the D O J on the city. We're allowing Striker, Greenwood, Turek, Perry, the people that are responsible for the problems are the ones that built you. I asked for it, both from the city and from the I R, from the D O J Premium Information Act. No, we can't see it. We can't, we got to wait till the signatures are on the timeline, and it's too late. And you wait, and you wait. You know, we're not going to have any changes till two thousand and fifteen, and most of you are satisfied with that. It's safe, it really is safe.
Thank you. Next speaker, Arista Lewis, followed by Dr. Bill Cass, followed by Don Strider. Welcome.
I'm Ukrainian. I take my feelings seriously, and it is my fourth language. We came to America for due process, freedom of speech, et cetera. I also own the homeless men shelter in Chicago. I also own the homeless men's shelter in Chicago and a large residential psychiatric facility, so I have expertise in those areas. I am horrified by the disparity I have seen in response of all of you and the media, from the James Boyd killing to the two homeless men killed by the three teenagers. I'm not the only one. The New York Times noticed as well. They have published a very good article mentioning if the police officers themselves set an example of violence against the homeless, they shouldn't be surprised if others follow it, especially young boys who want to grow up and be policemen. That's my addition to that. Why wouldn't the people who committed these crimes believe they could kill and get away with it when the cops keep doing exactly that? You get hold of your police force. You take control of them. They're your servants. You all shouldn't be afraid of them.
Next speaker, Dr. Bill Cass.
I'm Bill Cass. I'd like to make a statement of what I want to talk about, and that is, I want to propose that public input must be an integral part of the creation of APD law enforcement policy in the future. Now, let me explain where I think we are right now, and that is that we have a situation where legislative bodies have passed too many laws, and they have passed too many bad laws. The result is that we used to pick and choose among these laws as to what to enforce, but they do the prioritization of law enforcement. They then do, they then have an excuse because there are so many bad laws that criminalize trivial offenses, and you see the result of that, we're spending billions of dollars for private prisons, and that itself is another issue. But the fact is, it allows APD to make a judgment about what to enforce and how to enforce these laws. And the result of that is that APD has chosen to become militarized, have the face of a military unit. They have a, they have a presence which is much like an occupying army in our own country. And I think that that's where public input needs to be made into the creation of APD policy. By that, I mean, APD is under the offices of the mayor. The mayor must give up some of that power and appoint people who can be part of the policy commission that will allow the public to decide who ought to prioritize laws, who to enforce, and what kind of tactics are used to enforce these laws. There are police departments, we pay for them, and we have a right to ask them to behave in a way that we want them to behave so that they can enforce the laws in the way that we want them to enforce.
Thank you, Dr. Cass. Don Schrader, followed by Scott Hickerson, followed by Danny Hernandez, followed by Nora Anaya. Welcome.
Sixty-nine years ago this Wednesday, the United States atom bombed Hiroshima, Japan. The United States murdered a hundred-and-sixty-six thousand people, over fifty times the number of people murdered in New York in Washington, D.C. on nine eleven. The United States is the only nation to atom bomb whole cities of people. The United States murdered mostly women and children in Hiroshima. Many of the men had gone to war. Eyes melted in their sockets, noses and mouths became open holes, friends did not recognize each other, some no longer had faces, many people completely evaporated. Some held their arms out from their bodies to avoid the agony of raw burns rubbing together. Sheets of skin trailed from fingertips. Some reached out to help the severely injured, then drew back their hands, they were holding gobs of charred flesh. Is this treating other people as we want to be treated? Is this loving our neighbors as ourselves? Are you proud of Sandia and Los Alamos Weapons Lab? Daily for decades, they have designed hundreds of nuclear weapons much worse, much worse than the Hiroshima bombs. A life-giving job at minimum wage is infinitely better than a mass murder job at Sandia Weapons Lab, Lockheed Martin, Los Alamos Weapons Lab, or Kirkland Air Force Base.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. The next speaker is Scott Hickerson, followed by Danny Hernandez, followed by Nora Anaya.
Hello, council members. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the public. Sixteen thousand Albuquerqueans sent you a message when they signed that petition. I didn't come here today to originally talk about it, but the conspiracy isn't whether it's fourteen thousand votes or eleven thousand votes. The conspiracy is that you can just discount fifty percent of the signatures on whatever basis. You know, somebody could bring in twenty thousand signatures, and if y'all don't like the issue, and you don't want to give Albuquerque a chance to vote on it, then you, oh, well, ten thousand of those signatures aren't any good, so sorry, you didn't make your number. I mean, Stalin said it's not who votes, it's who counts the votes that matter. I support the initiative. I am very conservative. I'm a Republican. I've voted Republican my whole life. And the change that's going on in our country is I support Rand Paul and Cory Vokes legislation that they're doing. I don't want our taxpayers paying thousands of dollars a year to keep somebody a nonviolent drug user who had pot on them or smoked it, you know. Heck, if sugar and alcohol and caffeine were legal, I'd be in jail a long time ago. You know, I don't use pot, but I don't think it's right. I mean, the industrial prison complex in this country is way out of hand. They make millions of dollars keeping these people behind bars. We need this ballot. I would vote for it. I think we should bring it. I don't think violent drug abusers need to be taking up thousands, forty, sixty thousand dollars of our taxpayer dollars every year to keep behind bars. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, do you have a question for me, sir?
Just a quick question. As a Republican, you see it as physically responsible to repeal such a law, right? Is that what I'm...
Well, I mean, so what do you mean repeal?
Well, decriminalize, you know.
Yeah. I think it's very physically responsible. I think it's a waste of money. And I think that the whole issue is changing. People are changing, you know. Once I saw our soldiers guarding opium fields in Afghanistan and learned that ninety percent increase in production while we're there occupying that country, it's ridiculous. It's very corrupting. And I think that we learn after prohibition. I think the penalties that they come down, it'll solve a lot of problems. A lot of people don't, you don't need to be doing years in prison for having marijuana on you or for smoking it. Now, I can see some drug dealers and gangs, and the other violence that goes with it is an issue, but I don't, I just feel like that's a huge waste of money. And I know the CCA will lose millions if this is, if this issue is voted on, and I think they should. I don't think, you know, America has the number-one prison population in the entire world, and it's just gotten way out of hand, and it, it's biased against blacks and minorities. You know, there is three-hundred percent more blacks in prison than there are whites, and they are only fifteen percent of the population. And either you can say, oh, the system's biased, and it is, or you can say, well, they're more apt to commit crime, you know, and either way, it's a racial issue. So I think that the petition is important. And so I don't know if this girl who's discounting these signatures, if, who's, what kind of accountability is there for her? There are sixteen thousand turned in, and she's gonna, you know, oh, well, this one isn't good, this one isn't good, and now we're down to five? I mean, how many do you need to get something on the ballot?
Thank you. Thank you. Danny Hernandez, I think he spoke earlier, Nora Anaya, welcome back. Tyler Polakowski, Ernest Turdament, and Lisa Uval. Her name is in the conference committee, and be prepared to speak. Go proceed, Sliden.
My name is Nora Tachias Anaya, and I have something to read here, and I am thanking you guys, councilman, president, and council persons, for seemingly to be caring enough to listen to our stories, and they're not stories, the truth is it stands. We are not at war with the police. Why are we being treated as the APD is an occupying force rather than a department trained to serve and protect? Now, one of the things that I'm seeing, there was an eyes being sent, "Mr. Perry, there was never any clear glass windows broken." I'm sorry, I'm talking too loud, I'm sorry. There was never any clear glass windows broken. They put a ten-thousand-dollar window or plate door because they think they might have needed it. I got arrested for minor infections, and I got manhandled, as you saw in the video. And I'm not blaming every officer, I'm not blaming everyone. I'm telling you that we need attention to this, and I'm sorry if it bothered you guys that you're tired at the end of the day, we work twelve hours sometimes, and come over here. And I'm telling you, right now, I can't even work. But thank you very much for seemingly trying to help us.
Thank you, Sliden. Next speaker is Simon Polakowski, followed by Ernest Turdament. Welcome.
Council President, Council. I've been in front of council many times, and I stated, I'd rather not be here wasting your time or my time. I came here for a council in regards to another issue, but while I was here, I saw something I never saw on the mainstream media. I saw people like Ms. Anaya, I saw people like Mr. Del, Silvio Del Angelo, Mike Gomez, and I saw a lot of things, and it was an eye-opener, and it really opened up my eyes to what's going on in our city. In fact, I tell people, they complain to me, I go, listen, go down to city council and complain to them. They're the ones that can do something, have them listen to you. That's what they're there for. I can't do anything. And so I tell everybody from the full spectrum, also, this is very disturbing, this wall that's been built here. I've been coming here, the people that I believe that are supposedly the cause of building this wall, they were coming here before council and begging council to act, and no one did anything, nothing, till finally the feds came in on their own. So I tell these people, listen, Ms. Anaya, they see understanding and compassion as a form of weakness because they're the possessors of power, and all they recognize is an equal or superior power. Again, I was voted here by four members of President of Council and former counselor Stuart Cook and this administration. You brought me here, and I'm gonna keep on coming down here because there is no other public platform where an average citizen can voice their concerns about what's going on here in our city, county, state, or country. You took that away when you made public access television, what it isn't anymore. And I told all the people here, I wish you had gone down before and you could confront city council through the media. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernest Turdament, followed by Lisa Uval, followed by Diana Vargas.
Welcome back. I'd like to address 01415, the suspension of the POC, and I want to make clear that from this side of the new barrier, it's crystal clear that the POC is a broken entity that has no business in our community because it doesn't serve the community. We need immediate suspension of the POC. There are guidelines within the DOJ for you to start legislation now to address those issues, and if you believe otherwise, you have misinformation. And along with that, we need the non-renewal of the IRO's contract when it expires in the next couple of months. With regard to our new little architecture here, what this says to us is that you still don't get it. It says to us that nothing still has changed. Your debate on R.A. fourteen-two says it even more. I heard someone who I admire say the council's business is the business of the city of Albuquerque. Counselors, the city of Albuquerque is broken. It's become so negligent that it's corrupt. Your business is the people of Albuquerque. To hell with the city. The city's corrupt, and they're creating all of these problems that are manifesting in our corrupt police department. How much longer do we have to come down here? It's not a pleasure to come down here and gripe because you don't get it. You just still refuse to get it. I'm sad.
Go proceed. Lisa, Uval, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lisa Uval. I'm with the New Mexico Coalition to End Homelessness, or a statewide membership organization that works on permanent solutions to homelessness. I'm here tonight to speak in support of O fourteen fourteen, which would fund essential services in our community for folks that are homeless and/or with behavioral health issues. You all know that there's been some very terrible things that have happened in our community in the last few months to folks that are experiencing homelessness, and I think that the situation has caused us all to ask ourselves, what can we do to prevent this from happening again, or what could we have done to prevent it from happening in the first place? And that's a complicated question, but I know for sure that part of the answer is helping folks that are homeless get off the streets permanently into safe, stable housing. And we actually know what it would take to do that. We know that it's safe, affordable housing, plus the supports and services for folks to keep that housing. In Albuquerque, we have about a dozen permits for housing programs that are funded through HUD. Over a twelve-month, recent twelve-month period, ninety percent of the folks served in that program were still in housing or had exited to another form of permanent housing at the end of the program year. Ninety percent. And these are folks that were homeless, many who are homeless for a very long time prior coming, prior to coming into the housing, and also have serious mental illness or substance abuse. So we know this is a solution that works. It's also highly cost-effective. A recent University of New Mexico study of a Housing First program found that it costs about thirty percent less to provide housing and services for someone than to allow them to remain homeless. So I really urge the city council to invest in what we know is a real solution to homelessness in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa. Next speaker, Diana Vargas, followed by Don Meters, followed by Ella Wegman, followed by Keith Lopez, who will be the last speaker.
Diana, please.
Don Meters? Welcome.
Is Keith Lopez the next, or...
Don, who's next? And then Ella Wegman, then Keith Lopez. I guess you're right after Ella Wegman, Keith Lopez. Go proceed.
Mr. President, councilors, much as I hate to support a progressive tax, I would speak in support of the tax part of helping homeless. It would be, as I mentioned about before, it's a quite cost-effective measure, and certainly we need those services in the city. As to the repetitive nature of some people's business down here, I think they're gonna keep coming until they feel they're heard, and I think that's appropriate. DOJ's findings kind of bear that out. So those of you who don't wanna listen, I'm sorry, but those of us, we do to work.
The Department, the Department of Justice, in one of its continents, indicated civilian oversight of police was crucial. It was critical of the current oversight process because the APD contract limits oversight. The mayor recently negotiated a new contract and extended the limits on oversight. This is bad faith on the part of the mayor. The DOJ also made clear that there was a serious problem with APD's lack of enforcement of its policy on video recording. Robin Hammer reported a couple of weeks ago to the Police Oversight Task Force that Chief Eaton will not impose discipline on officers who do not turn on their video cameras. Will not impose discipline on officers who do not turn on their video cameras. What can you do? Tell DOJ individually and as a council you do not approve. When the administration comes to you with an agreement with DOJ that does more to protect the brass than it does to protect the people of the city, that does more to prevent, change than to promote it, that is more appearance than reality. When the administration asks you to fund that agreement, as it is asked you to fund its $220,000 negotiator, tell them no. Better yet, don't wait until then. Tell them now that you won't, and tell them repeatedly that you won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete Lopez.
I don't know how to put this on the screen here.
Ufal, listen.
I just want this to lay right in there. Good evening, Presidents Sanchez and Counselors, and the legal advice that no one forgets. Hopefully this evening will be a learning experience for all of us. I had, according to this, I had a misfortune of inheriting these properties in the song room in the old town area. I've been low block, I have been stoned by the gang bangers there, I have been threatened, my wife has been threatened, my fiancee has been stalked. The gang bangers play cop, they control the streets. I have called APD 120 times, it's the same result, we didn't see it. This is a personal question for me, you, President Sanchez. If you were assaulted and you know your perpetrator, and you call APD, and they catch the perpetrator and they bring you, say, that's him, are they gonna arrest him or are they gonna let him go because APD didn't see it? They're gonna let it go, you know, it's because it's you that they're arresting, because it's me they're gonna let him go. But anyway, back to this, and nothing personal there. But anyway, my house, my vehicles have been vandalized by 45 caliber. Uh, I'm a veteran, Vietnam veteran, I went in '69, got out in '73, I'm 61 now. Which brings me to a lot of issues with APD. I'm not saying all of APD is bad because there's good and bad and everything, but APD is corrupt, I see it for myself. I have all these little houses right here, there's, I sit right here in the middle, this one of the homes that I inherited, right here, 1214 audience. I have 17 heroin dealers and users aggravated assault officers, the whole nine yards, and they're clear, they're clear to go. APD, for some reason, doesn't oversee them. So here's the question, is APD corrupt or are they doing their job? I don't think they're doing their job. I'm the only one on the neighborhood watch that will stand up. All my other neighbors are good, they close the doors and they leave. I've been assaulted, poking glasses by the gang bangers, the whole nine yards, and nothing's been done because APD goes out there, and I don't know if you guys, my kids saw this silly movie called Judge Dredd, if I may continue. It's a silly movie, but APD are Judge Dredd. This gentleman right here, I went to the bathroom, he came back.
I apologize, but your time is expired.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's go and go to the other place and then we'll take a dinner break. And there will be Police Oversight Task Force meeting on Wednesday, August 6th, at 5:30 PM, in the Council Committee Room. Counselor Batten.
There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, August 13th, at 5:00 PM in the Council Committee Room.
Counselor Gibson.
There will be a LIMRA Tax Implement Development District Board meeting on Thursday, August 14th, at 11:30 AM in the CIP Conference Room, 7096.
Counselor Batten.
Thanks, President. There will be a Financing and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, August 11th, at 5:00 PM in the Council Committee Room, Room 9, excuse me, 49. There will be a Mesa de Sol Taxi from Development District Board meeting on Thursday, August 14th, at 11:30 AM in the CIP Conference Room at 7096. And there will be a Mesa de Sol Public Agreement District Board meeting on Thursday, August 14th, at 1:30 PM in the CIP Conference Room.
We're just gonna go ahead and take a dinner break and we will return probably in about 35 minutes. On this agenda, I want to go ahead and hear from them first, Kat Navinski, Mike Gomez, Simon Polakowski, and Alan Wegman. Go proceed, move to the front, and you first speak. Welcome back, Kat.
Thank you. I don't have much to say, but personally, I have, during the last year, about one a year, I filed about three or four complaints against APD. One against one of the employees immediately. Yes, I've been waiting, I wasn't so sure if we have remaining three members of APD Oversight Commissioners, Commissioners, or, or more. I know two resigned, three resigned lately. And yeah, now I know it is three. How do you affect it? Julia decided to fade your, and you go to jury trial. Twelve people, and then three of jury member decided, I just can't, I'm scared, these three people, why they still hanging there? I'm sorry. That, that should be sent to the law immediately, not fresh on earth. Three people, of nine? Yes, I am for new one. But present situation, I don't want it, then three of these members decide, uh, this is small issue, basically harassment. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mike Gomez. I think he's right here. Simon Polakowski. And Alan Wegman will be the last speaker.
Council President, Council. I, I support the suspension of the Police Oversight Committee. Actually, I attended, I believe, two of the meetings. The Police Department does the oversight. In the present form, I believe that this oversight is not being provided. There should be some type. I guess this is all contingent on what the Department of Justice recommends to the city of Albuquerque do. And again, we do need oversight. Police are hired to oversee us, to oversee if we violate the law or whatever. So they should have a rece, they should be, this should be reciprocal with the department. They can, it should be equation. They investigate us, we should be able to investigate them. This should be a body of citizens who have no connection with the department, with the department, but of course, not in present form, where we all know, I believe, what five or six members resigned from this mission. And there's been a tremendous amount of controversy. So I have an agreement, please suspend the operation. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Counselor Polakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't know how many months ago, but Counselor Jones and myself had the same deal come up to, to, to suspend the Police Oversight Commission. And I think one thing that came out in public comment was that everybody felt that some oversight was better, some civilian oversight was better than none at all. Now, do you understand that you're right, we have like three members left? How effective is it? Probably not very effective, but if this happens, then you're gonna get a hearing officer that's going to make those decisions until the ordinance comes about. So, are you aware of that? And you see that as a better alternative than having some civilian oversight?
Well, I don't know the real process. There's a complaint filed in the department, as you're saying, there's a hearing officer. There should be a process. I mean, I went to an Oversight Committee meeting and they took testimony from somebody over a cellphone. And the person who had brought the issue in front of it to his Oversight Committee, he stopped out, he couldn't believe it. He said, they're listening to somebody on a cellphone. And I remember many years ago when they claimed APD always used over the telephone. I mean, he couldn't confront this person who was making this testimony. So to me, it was like a sham. And, but there has to be a process where the average citizen can bring a complaint and be heard.
Right.
After, after day.
Yes, Mr. President, I know that this is the new ordinance, hopefully all the input from the council is gonna be very, very good. But until that point in time, if we do get rid of the three member POC, then hearing officers are gonna have to hear them. I'm not sure how that's gonna work, but it, you know, so I don't know if you guys are gonna have an issue with that or not.
But then again, I don't know what the. Ellen Wegman.
Good evening. Thank you again. Much as I don't like the current situation, uh, I think it might be better than nothing. Because we have a minimally functioning, emphasis on the word minimally, Police Oversight Process, the Oversight Task Force, it was able to hear from IRO Robin Hammer about the kind of discipline that Chief Eaton is not imposing on video cameras. And I don't know that we would approve that if there were no Police Oversight Commission. The, I think you're gonna, you're gonna get recommendations from the Police Oversight Task Force that are gonna put a very strong emphasis on analysis, policy, in a new Police Oversight Operation. And, uh, I'd like to see that start sooner rather than later. I'd like to see the new system come in before January 1st so that the current minimally functioning body is functioning as minimally length as possible. But that one piece of information was a very valuable piece of information about how the Police Department is operating now or not operating now, and the level of faith in which the city is actually trying to correct the problems that many people saw for years and the DOJ pointed out very ponderously. And I don't, and to the extent that it minimally accomplishes revealing what's going on, it's worth it, but not for long. Thank you.
I have one question for you, Ms. Wegman. And that question was in regards to your statement regarding Ms. Hammer making the statement to the POC regarding the chief's not.
She made it to the Police Oversight Task Force.
Right, don't you think she may have made that same statement to the administration and the council? Had we not had the POC?
She might not have, if there were no POC functioning, Ms. Hammer might not have been in a position to know that. And I'm assuming she learned it as a matter of functioning to make presentations of, of what discipline was being imposed, what disciplinary policies were to the POC. So my concern is no POC, perhaps you don't even have the IRO getting that information to be able to pass it on.
Thank you. Counselor Batten.
So, Mr. Wegman, an important point that you made, sorry. However, we had a kind of resignation en masse of three, of the last three Commissioners. So I understand about, about the informational role of, of having meetings. But with the three Commissioners, and I don't really know that much about any of those individual Commissioners, but with the three Commissioners who are now remaining, aren't these gonna be pretty much the Commissioners that are most, that are least likely to be questioning the IRO just by the matter of the way that the Commission has evolved, if you will?
That's the impression I have, yes.
So wouldn't a hearing officer in that kind of situation, an independent officer that we would hire as a contract, one dog in a fight, give us a better result, that kind of situations, especially in an appeal?
Well, I'm not sure who would appeal from a hearing officer. Inspector Robert.
Pardon me, oh, who would appeal the hearing officer to?
Yes. And, and basically, the, the issue that I'm talking about is, is in terms of looking at overall, rather than individual cases, at overall department policy. I think that as long as you have an IRO who is responsible to reporting to a POC about overall department policy, you would have the IRO responsible for looking at overall department policy. If you didn't have a POC to receive reports, I'm not sure what the IRO, what the IRO would be doing. So I think it's important, I think it's important enough that, that the new institution should not wait until January 1st. And that's more important than whether or not you continue the current POC.
I agree with that 100%, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the general public comment on O-14-15. Counselor Batten.
Counselors, I, I did think we ought to seriously consider this measure, that, I mean, we're now down to three Commissioners. And, you know, I agree with the Speaker earlier, so that we can ensure the menu oversight process regardless of the schedule with the administration and the DOJ and their, their negotiation. I think we ought to proceed with what the debate we've had with Counselor Verkanovitz and Minister Bill. And I kind of, I think I ran off a short laundry list of some of the things that I would consider us having a debate on and, and completing that process and at least coming up with something that we have voted on and agree on, and then hear from the DOJ if they see problems with that. But, so I do think we need to move quickly, and I agree with, with Mr. Wegman, that we have to try to get the, if we create a new budget, we should try to get it in place ASAP. So even if this, if this bill of Counselor Sanchez and mine were to pass, that it would be for a very short time. But I'm inclined to defer this one more time, but, but I'm also inclined that we go ahead and debate and really vote on this next time around.
Counselor Batten.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think, I know that this POC ordinance is, we're trying to work really quickly, I think, meeting with committee again and trying to get some of those issues we had hashed out, bring back to the council. And let me say, Counselor, and I'm gonna support this, and let me tell you why, I think there's a good chance of another POC member, and so that would take it down to two. And if that happens, I don't know if it will work or not. So, I think I'm gonna go, I will, I think I, I will support this bill and this because if we go down to two, that.
It is because if we don't have it too, that will change some things too. So I think it's imperative, though, that we really get this ordinance back to the Council as soon as possible so we can hash it out and get it in.
Counselor Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Woodruff. I think that at one point we thought that we could wait until DOJ came up with recommendations and some other sort of milestones, if you will. But I think that at this juncture, we need to have that ordinance in front of us as quickly as possible. I don't know what the ETA is for that ordinance, but I would hope there would be very quickly and then it would dovetail with this action tonight. Mr. Milindres.
Mr. President, Counselor Gargantino, we have had several Police Oversight Task Force meetings. The last time that the bill came up, there was a few questions that they needed some ironing out. So we can have a draft at August 18th, which is when the bill is scheduled to come back. So we should have a draft on August 15th for debate and additional changes.
Counselor, if I could be reminded again, maybe if you were to tell us, and Counselor Woodruff, I sort of asking to move it so that the task force can have a ready to opine on what they wanted or on the, did we set any kind of timeline that we would have to undo, or was it just whenever it was ready?
Mr. President, Counselor Gargantino, I think the implication was that it should be ready for the meeting that the item was deferred to. And last time it was heard it was deferred till August 18th, so we've been working very diligently to make sure that we're going to be ready for August 15th, as your recommendations.
So all things being correct, and at that, we would be, we would be, we would be.
Mr. President, Counselor Gargantino, assuming it's in the shape that the Council prefers, then yes.
Right. Okay, thank you.
As the co-sponsors available, we've deferred this a couple of times, and I think it's paramount that we now move forward and that we'll support a deferral till the next meeting. But I'm really concerned out here that we may be down to two POC numbers, but now we have three. And the Department of Justice was extremely critical of how the POC was operating. And I agree with Counselor Brad Woodruff and Counselor Gargantino, that changes are needed quickly, and hopefully we can get that done before the end of the year. But at the next meeting, I will support abolishing the POC and its current structure because it's flawed, it doesn't work, and the Department of Justice told us that, and we've known that for a long time.
Mr. President, if I could, and one other, one other reason, I wanted to give everybody a chance to just kind of regroup and think about this because we haven't discussed it recently since its introduction. And also wanted to perhaps look at tightening up the language just a little bit about the hearing officer and making that a little bit more clear. It's spoken by Mr. Milindres about that. So we'll try to just tighten up that language, make it clear that there's some kind of vague allegation to city staff serving that function. I'm inclined to think that should be someone from the outside. So I'll move that deferral, I'm sorry, next meeting.
We have a motion and a second to defer code-stripping until August 18th. All those in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed, agrees and disagree. We are now on P4, and that is a document that proposes to be submitted to the voters at the next citywide special election or the general election ballots for the November 4th, 2014, that amends Article 3, Section 3 of the Charter of the City of Albuquerque concerning direct legislation by.